Call the meeting to order. Everybody here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. In accordance with nine forty CMR twenty-nine point ten, remote participation adopted by the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee, April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and pursuant to the Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order sustaining certain provisions of the meeting law, as General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, and they gather in one place. This meeting of the Greater Lowell School Committee is being conducted via remote participation by the following members. Kenton Giggie, Fred Bahu, Lee Getchea, Curtis Lemay, George O'Hair, Matthew Sheen, Judge Tatius, myself, Paul Moran. No person, the following members and individual and members are present. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Please rise, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
To the flag. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Roll call.
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Here.
Mr. Tatius?
Present.
Mr. Giggie?
On computer, yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yeah.
Mr. Lemay?
Present.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Uh, public appearance. We're gonna suspend the public appearance portion and going right into the meeting. Uh, school committee communication? There are none. Report of the student representative.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, there's no report of the student representative due to the school closure.
Okay. Uh, approval of the minutes for March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty.
I need a vote. Matt Sheen approved that. Second.
Curtis Lemay.
Thank you. Ready for the roll, Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Report of the treasurer. I need a motion to waive the reading.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Who is the second?
Lee.
Thank you. Go for the roll, Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Motion to approve the expenditures for the sum of three million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents as allocated. Roll call.
Do I need a motion?
So move.
Second?
I'll get it.
Second is Mr. Tatius, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the general counsel, there is no report of general counsel. I will turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Good evening. Uh, the first item. Good evening. I hope everybody is doing well. The first item on the agenda. I'm doing well, thank you. The first item on the agenda, I'd like to invite the interim assistant superintendent-principal, Mr. Mike Barton, to recognize student Enrico N'Natoli V. for his accomplishment of being selected as Massachusetts Vocational Student of the Year two thousand and twenty for Greater Lowell Technical High School.
Thank you, interim superintendent Davis. Good evening, everyone. Enrico N'Natoli V., uh, son of Enrico and Sherri Natoli O'Drake, is a student who has excelled in programming and web development program. He has maintained a rigorous course of study which has included advanced placement and dual enrollment courses and is currently ranked second in a class of five hundred and four. As a student in programming and web development, Enrico has earned seven different certifications, including MTA networking fundamentals, MTA security fundamentals, and MTA software development. Enrico is the president of the National Technical Honor Society, a member of Skills USA, and a three-sport varsity athlete in soccer, swimming, and track and field. His volunteer activities include the development and recruitment of marketing of Greater Lowell's first annual Super Smash Brothers tournament, as well as assisting with events at the Disabled American Veterans Chapter Forty-seven. In addition to his leadership, athletic, and volunteer activities, Enrico maintains a co-op position at IBM where he works in software development, testing data, and analytics. He is the recipient of the Outstanding Achievement in Dual Enrollment Chemistry Award, the Outstanding Achievement in Honors Precalculus Award, the varsity soccer offensive MVP Award, and has achieved perfect attendance in his high school career to date. Of his time at Greater Lowell Technical High School, Enrico has said, "Greater Lowell Tech has provided me with an amazing experience where I've been, I have been able to expand my academic, technical, and social skills. It has given me an opportunity to define myself as a person with its wide variety of shops, sports, and activities." Enrico is a recipient of the John Abigail Adams Scholarship and plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in computer science. He has been accepted at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, the University of Massachusetts Boston, and Worcester Polytechnic Institute. So congratulations to Enrico N'Natoli V. and his parents, Enrico and Sherri Natoli. Typically, we would be doing this at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, but given the current circumstances, uh, we wanted to provide this tribute to him tonight. So thank you.
I also wanna congratulate Enrico on this wonderful achievement, and we're very proud of him. We miss him, and we hope him and his family are doing well. They are watching, uh, live tonight, and we just want to extend our congratulations to Enrico and the Natoli family. And they have just emailed me and said he has accepted, and he will be attending UMass Lowell, uh, this coming year. So congratulations, Enrico. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Enrico. Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Enrico. Thank you.
Uh, this, the next item on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-one school committee calendar. In an effort to avoid scheduling conflicts while developing our two thousand and twenty-one school calendar, which we're working on currently, I'm asking that the committee approve the two thousand and twenty-one school committee's calendar. A copy of the proposed meeting schedule is included in the package for your review. So I'm, I'm asking you to, to accept those dates. Would you like me to read the dates? Or, uh, I'm looking for a vote to approve the school committee meeting schedule for the two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Motion approved. Second.
I think.
Who is the second?
With me, George.
Thank you.
Tatius.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on, on the agenda for this evening, uh, is the contract extension for Assistant Principal, uh, Mrs. Linda Zambino. Due to the timeline of Mrs. Zambino's retirement, I am asking that the committee approve to extend her contract, which expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, until her retirement through August twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
Hello?
I'll second. Curtis Lemay.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie? Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda, I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent-Principal, Mr. Michael Barton, to provide an overview of our remote learning plan developed as a result of the extended school closure due to COVID-nineteen. A copy of the plan is included in, in the package.
Good evening again. So to give you, uh, an update and to give you some broad brushstrokes of the remote learning plan, uh, the plan really consists of three, uh, sort of a three-pronged approach in order to provide, uh, teaching and learning for students during this crisis. So, uh, the first part of the plan provides student work that is submitted to the cluster chairs and submitted to me, where, uh, teachers submit assignments, enrichment assignments, and other schoolwork, and it's posted on our school's website. We began that, collecting that work prior to the school closure, and we've continued, continuing to do that for five weeks now. So, on the school's website, there's a folder-based system where there's, uh, assignments and student work posted on a weekly basis that, uh, teach everyone, parents and students, can obtain, um, to do the work. And then, uh, secondly, the assignments that teachers submit are also sent home, uh, via the mail or in other means with a self-addressed stamped envelope so that, um, students can receive it in the mail, and they can complete the work and then mail it back. And the third part of the, the remote learning plant, plan is the broadest part, and that includes Google Classroom and other software-based means where, uh, prior to the closure, we had four hundred and eleven Google Classrooms going in our school district. Uh, currently, we have close to nine hundred classrooms going at, at the last time I checked. So, um, in addition to that, in order to provide for students who, uh, need, uh, devices, we've, we've currently to date distributed over three hundred devices to students who need them, uh, Google Chromebooks so that they can, uh, do the work that's posted on Google Classroom or posted on the school's website. So, uh, the remote learning plan provided, uh, an overview of what it is, how it's defined, what students and parents need for remote learning in terms of what's available on Google and what's available on other software sites. Uh, it outlined the student expectations as far as behavioral expectations and, um, their work and engagement expectations. It provided an office hour schedule for, uh, different subjects and different teachers. Uh, in addition to that, it provided office hours for counselors. Uh, some counselors made themselves available in the morning and afternoon, a few others in the evening hours. Furthermore, it included a rubric so that students and parents and teachers would know how they're graded. We decided to do a pass-fail grading system for the third quarter. Uh, we extended the third quarter so that students could get their work done, um, and we could transition, uh, and gain momentum throughout, uh, the third quarter, which will end on May fifth. It also provided some, um, physical education enrichment activities that were available and in addition to, uh, what's available on Google Classroom. It also provided some social-emotional resources for students that may be in need of those at the time. It gave some clarity to English language education and special education services, uh, that we can offer remotely, as well as, um, teacher expectations and administrator expectations. As of date, uh, we've sent out five hundred, over five hundred packages of work to, to, um, family homes where, as of right now, we're slowly, well, actually increasingly getting that work back. That's coming to my attention on a daily basis. I can tell you over ninety-six percent of this faculty are on Google Classroom, um, over the course of, uh, the last two weeks where we began this remote learning process. Um, some other interesting statistics, um, we've had a thirty-nine percent increase in the use of, um, email over the course of the last, um, last month. So, um, that I think is, you know, an overview of, uh, where we are in terms of remote learning at this time.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Lemay.
Uh, so, Mr. Barton, is, is this a model that has been adopted by the Department of Education? Or, uh, is everybody adapted to this? I guess that's my question.
Sure. So, you know, in the beginning of the closure, the commissioner's direction was to provide enrichment resources, uh, that really were review work, and, and he emphasized the challenge of grading. So we responded to that by doing so on the school's website. And now, um, to answer your, to answer specifically your point, um, remote learning has certainly been adopted in the Commonwealth. It's being encouraged, and it does, you know, it's, it varies from district to district for, for a number of reasons, but, uh, the answer is yes. It's, it's definitely widespread in the state of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, you said ninety-six percent are using Google Cla- Classroom. What are the other four percent using, are they using the website?
Yeah. What will happen is, and what's happening is, they submit their work through their cluster chairperson to me, and then I, uh, send it out to the students. Um, and it's also posted on the website.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody's.
So I think, Mr. Getchea, the answer is those that may not have the internet access, their package is being mailed home to them. And if they have the internet access but choose to, to view the work via the folders that are on our website, that's another, another way that they can view the work.
No, Jill, I was talking about the teachers.
Oh.
Okay, I got my answer. I got the answer.
So we're, we're up to about ninety-six percent of the teachers now on Google, Google Classroom.
Right. Okay, the other four percent are using, what, the website too? And all the.
Website.
The other four percent are providing their work to us, which we're uploading to the website? Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, anyone else have any questions? Uh, Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Barton? Awesome job. Uh, looks like a lot of work, a lot of scheduling.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Yeah, well, we, we had a lot of help from, from teachers and others. So it was a team effort.
Yeah. I'd also like to thank Mr. Barton, who worked extremely hard on this, as well as really a collaboration of the entire faculty. I couldn't say enough about, about the faculty coming together to do what they need to do to provide our students with continuous learning opportunities. So I, I'd like to thank them as well and say that, uh, I'm very appreciative for all the efforts that they're putting forth during this very unprecedented time.
That's a great job by everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Great job.
Outstanding job by everybody. Good job.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, uh, is, uh, I'm, I'm lost my track. Number five on the agenda, I would like to recommend that, this is a recommendation to continue to, to pay all full-time and all non-exempt hourly employees unpaid active status. And those employees that remain unpaid active status, continue to be paid their regular compensation and, and benefits until school reopens. I'm asking for approval.
I'll make the motion, approve.
I'll second that. Sheen, second, Mr. Bahu?
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I, I know I can speak on my behalf as well as on behalf of the teachers. We appreciate your support during this time as we continue to provide our students with, uh, with learning. The next item on the agenda is I'm asking the committee to approve revising the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school calendar by removing four days of April vacation and having staff work on these days, which will count towards, towards our one hundred and eighty-five days. And this would make the last day of school, June twelfth. I just want to add, I'm asking for this request so that we can maintain the continuity of learning and the momentum that we have began to see, uh, in remote learning, uh, with our students.
I would move approval, Curtis Lemay.
Second, Judge Tatius.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, and I think that's all that I have on my agenda this evening.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Jill.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Putting everything together. Let's talk to them and take that task. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hair.
Yeah. Thank you, Jill.
Uh, report of the business manager? There is no report tonight. Uh, old business? Any item on the agenda? Are they to date?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have something under old business?
Yes, uh, Mr. Barton.
Okay. Um, last month, we, uh, went ahead and approved, um, a proposed budget of forty-nine million dollars. Um, I know that was a major increase for our school from last year. And, um, I'm questioning if, um, the state is going to be able to satisfy, um, their proposed, their proposed fiscal budget due to the current COVID-nineteen situation. So I, um, am gonna ask the superintendent to possibly fill us in either now or next meeting about if they, um, decide to give us less or level fund us, how, um, we could go ahead and make that work.
Thank you, Mr. Bahu. So I appreciate your question. I think it's a very good question. Uh, so right now at this time, uh, we are assuming that there will be, uh, some revisions to our current budget due to the, due to the loss of revenue, uh, in the state. We're not aware of at this time what, what that revision to the budget will be, but we're expecting it to happen. Uh, myself and the business manager have sat and discussed, uh, three different scenarios in regards to revising the budget. So, uh, I, I would say that we are, we are prepared for, for a revision. Do we know what that revision is yet? No, we, we don't. If you'd like, I can call the business manager who participated in a meeting earlier today with maybe some updates in regards to, uh, what the possible, uh, revisions might, might be.
Well, I guess maybe, well, who knows? I'm sure this is going to be something that's ongoing. So if he wants to fill us in by email, that could possibly work.
Yeah. We'll, we'll be more than happy to do that. Do you have any more questions, Mr. Bahu? Are you looking for a further explanation? Or are you satisfied with that?
Well, it, it just sounds like, you know, something that could end up on the front burner rather quickly. So, um, if you could possibly, you know, fill us in as this is moving forward so that we can begin to identify, um, what's being done, um, by the business manager and yourself to satisfy any issues that may come up.
Absolutely. Any revision to the, to, to the budget would have to be before, be brought before the board for your approval. So we will keep you updated as we hear from, uh, the governor or the commissioner of education in regards to, uh, the change in chapter seventy-eight that we would be receiving.
Okay. And I guess lastly, uh, at the, uh, next meeting, maybe you could give us a complete update, um, whether it's gonna be from remote or, uh, add out general school committee meeting.
The, the budget presentation?
Well, not necessarily the budget presentation, just what changes may occur. Cause I guess in the next thirty days, you may be a little bit more knowledgeable to what the governor proposes.
Uh, in regards to budget, I'm not sure. But if, if there is some change or we have an answer within the next thirty days, I'd be more than happy to provide you with an update at the next school committee meeting.
Okay, that'll be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I, I have a, well, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Could you, could you actually hypothetically speaking say they closed school down because New Hampshire kind of announced it today that they're shutting down? Could you provide us the list of, of the potential savings? If the schools closed? If it's shut down, such like an example, substitute teachers? There's probably right around three hundred grand there?
Yep. We can provide you with some cost savings in relationship to, uh, school not reopening, yes.
Right. It's just, it's just hypothetical right now, cause the governor obviously hasn't announced it, but.
He has not announced it yet, but we, we can.
Right. It's like, you see what I mean? Just, just a list with potential savings.
Yes. However, we are still required to meet net school spending for this school year.
No, I, I understand that. It's a hypo- it's a hypothetical list.
Yep. We can, I can provide you that at the next school committee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All set, yeah? Uh, on the new business? I would just like to bring the school committee members up to date, regarding the, uh, naming criteria. Subcommittee has had to postpone its meeting due to, you know, school closure. And that, at the present time, I have a meeting set up for May fourteenth, uh, pending, uh, what happens in the near future. Uh, next, I have committee person motions. Uh, there are no motions. Uh, report of subcommittees, I guess I answered that. I don't know if any other subcommittees, uh, have met recently. If not, I would make, uh, someone make a motion to a grant.
Motion.
Who is the second?
Mr. Giggie.
Okay. Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Tatius?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. Getchea? Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Stay healthy and safe.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.